Good evening and welcome to the October 12, 2020 Board of Education meeting here at USD 290. We will go ahead and call this board meeting to order. We have four board members present. Please raise your hand or identify yourself when your name is called. Linda Alderman.
Present.
Julie Dandrio, present. Susan Moore.
Present.
She's joining us virtually. Shanda Olmstead.
Present.
We do have enough for our quorum. We are missing members Harold Wingert, Melidia Payne, and Chris Cunningham. And we've asked our superintendent to please say a couple of words about the absence of Mr. Cunningham this evening.
Before we get started tonight, if we just take a moment of silence and recognition of the Cunningham family and their tragic loss over the weekend, and let them know that they are in our thoughts and our regards as we try to work together to help them through this time. So as these folks come in, we'll take a moment here of silence for the Cunningham family. If Chris happens to be listening tonight, we just want to let him know that we're thinking about him. We do everything that we can to support him through this, and we wish he and Sarah the best as they work through this time. So with that, we'll turn it back over to the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb. It looks like we have added a board member here. We have Melidia Payne over here to my left.
I know Harold is coming.
Okay, great. Please stand at this time and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Melidia Payne that we approve tonight's agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. Please raise your hand if you have.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. There we go. And we've got 5-0 on that.
I love my charger.
Right. And we are moving on to consent agenda. Dr. Cobb, anything you want to go over?
No, there's nothing in the consent agenda that wouldn't be normal for the consent agenda.
Okay, perfect. Is there a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
It was moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Melidia Payne that we approve tonight's consent agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. Do you approve tonight's agenda? Yes. Perfect. And that's 5-0 on that motion. We do not have any comments from the public tonight. We are down to a really exciting time here where we have some grants that need some recognition, and we will take action to approve those grants and gifts. But Dr. Cobb is going to share with us some of this news.
Yeah, in a time where there's a lot of negative publicity going on about a lot of things and questions and concerns about the state of affairs, there are a lot of great things that continue to happen, and some of them we want to address here tonight. I wanted to thank Mrs. Shirley and Mrs. Miller, who are the leaders of our libraries in our elementary and secondary schools, for a grant that they applied for, the NEKLS grant. And this grant is going to garner almost $14,000 for our schools and our libraries. I think $2,000 for each of our elementary schools, $4,000 for the high school, and $3,500 for OMS. This is an incredible opportunity for us, and they've already started to utilize these funds to address some of the needs that we have in our libraries, to ensure, especially during COVID times, that our kids still have access to books and have access to them safely. So we wanted to thank Mrs. Miller and Mrs. Shirley for all of their work in making this a reality. And certainly, we want to thank the NEKLS Foundation for helping out our schools and being able to provide the additional dollars to support what we're doing within our schools. So thank you all to everybody that had a hand in this, for certain. We also had a Walmart grant, and we want to thank Brenda Wigger for her help with this. But ultimately, Brenda applied for a grant that could be utilized with our transition kids within some of our special education programs to help with work study and payment of work study as COVID-19 again has impacted our ability to place students in work environments and so on and so forth. So $1,000 from Walmart to help us continue to employ those students and provide learning opportunities for them is a great opportunity for us. And certainly, we want to thank Walmart and the Walmart Foundation for all that they do to continue to be supportive of schools. While we're talking about Walmart, Mr. Robinson was able to go to the Walmart Supercenter here in town and load up the entire bed of his truck with supplies that was donated from Walmart to our schools and then dispersed to each of our schools here last week. So again, Walmart continues to be an amazing partner for us, and certainly, at a time of crisis and need, they continue to come through and be an incredible helping hand to our students, our families, and our school, our community. The last one was the Patterson Foundation, and this one was kind of an interesting situation, which we all, the Franklin County Schools, got an email from the Patterson Family Foundation about our needs during COVID. And I think most of us thought that we might see some grant opportunity from this. They initially indicated somewhere between $1,000 and $10,000. I think when I initially filled it out, I was going to be happy if we had a $1,000 or $2,000 grant that we could utilize to continue to support our schools. But what we got was $24,180 from the Patterson Family Foundation. We are incredibly grateful for that opportunity, and will utilize it wisely in terms of helping our students and staff be successful as we continue to navigate uncharted waters here. But those are four grants that we've had available to us and that we wanted to publicly address and thank those entities for partnering with us and providing additional resources for us in times of crisis. So thank you to NEKLS, to Walmart multiple times, and certainly, to the Patterson Family Foundation for all their support of USD 290 schools.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb. Is there a motion to approve these generous grants and gifts as presented?
Madam President, I move we approve the grants and gifts as presented.
Second.
Second.
It was moved by Linda Alderman and seconded first by Harold Wingert, who has joined our group here this evening, to approve the grants and gifts as presented. All in favor, please raise your hand. And there is six yeses, and that motion carries. We are down to Section 5.02. We are glad to have Mrs. Bybee here tonight. She's going to present Fastbridge Fall Data.
We are only talking about Fastbridge today because we are still in the process of continuing with MAP testing. We're trying to get all of our remote learners tested, and that's a little, it just takes a lot of scheduling to be able to get that done. But we hope to be done with MAP on Friday. So just as a reminder, wanted to share with you the specific subtests of what Fastbridge tests. Remember, Fastbridge is our universal screener that we use to not only see what our kids are, how many of our kids are at high risk, some risk, low risk, but also specifically what skills they might be missing in reading or in math. Especially with reading, it's to be able to offer interventions, which we have used this process for many years. What we are excited about this year is that Fastbridge has added some screening to intervention math report, and that we might be able to also offer some math interventions for our kids within our core classrooms. So just as a reminder, these are the reading and math skills that students are tested on. These all do comply with the Dyslexia Reading Initiative through the state of Kansas. That is continuing this year. We thought we were going to have it pushed back a year, but that is not the case. So we are already in good shape for this. The expectation for the state is that we would have this in place starting next fall, and we are already in that process. So we're in good shape as far as that is concerned. This one right here, there are a lot of numbers on these slides that you probably were wondering what they all meant, so I'm here to hopefully clear that up for you. So what this is, is we wanted to take a look at our kindergarten, how they just came in as kindergartners. And so we are looking at, in the fall, when kids came in, what percent of the kids were at high risk, some risk and low risk. And then this incoming fall kindergarten, where they came at. And the green shows a very positive trajectory, which we are super excited about. What we learn from this is, what we can glean from this data is, number one, our kids need to be in school, because so much of what kindergarten learns are those early learning skills, those early reading skills, those early math skills. And if our kids are starting out with such a low percent of our kids in high risk, lower than we were last year, that's a reason why we need to have our kids in school to be able to make sure that that learning continues to move forward. The other thing that is very positive, and we were excited about, is our preschool. Last year, we've really, Mrs. Fanning has done an incredible amount of work, and Mr. Robinson, with our early childhood programs, getting them much more consistent with their curriculum. We started Haggerty, so that they were also, just as our kindergarten first grade teachers were using Haggerty to address funny muck awareness, that was also being done at the preschools. So I feel like, or we feel like, that this is definitely a positive, that our preschools are preparing our kids in a much better way than maybe what we had done in the past, and we want to continue to make those growths also. So then the next slide, this is looking at a same cohort. So it's kids from kindergarten, how many kids, I'm sorry, from winter of last year, where they scored, and then where they scored this year. So that first, and then each of those are the elementary schools, Garfield, Lincoln, Sunflower. So you can see, for instance, in that first box, Garfield Early Reading, we had 15% of our kids in a high-risk category in the winter, and those same group of kids this year scored as 52% high-risk. So as you can see, looking at all of those numbers, we have quite a few higher numbers of high-risk kids. And that is really just showing that the amount that is lost in those early foundation skills is significant. And again, what do we learn from this? We learn that we have a lot of work that needs to happen with our first graders with the early reading skills and the early math skills. Math doesn't look, on some instances, as huge, but it's important to note that from winter of kindergarten to fall of first grade, there are three different subtests that the kids were never tested on, which is where we're getting into more words. So sight words, word segmenting, decodable words. So those were all skills that they had not been practicing really since March. So again, what do we learn from this? We learned that for developing those foundational skills, it is so important that in-person instruction is definitely needed for our kiddos. Okay, and then this, what we wanted to see here is, again, the same cohort, but for second through 11th grade, we do the A reading and A math. So our goal here would be that we have 80% of our kids in low-risk and college pathway. And so that first number, it's not a greater-than sign, it's just basically moving towards that. That first number is how those kids scored in winter of our prior year to how they're scoring in the fall this year. And those are percentages. So for instance, second grade, there were 38% of kids in high risk in the winter, and there are still 38% of high risk in the fall. That's how they scored. So the green areas are areas that we had positive movement. The pink highlights are that, if you look at the winter, we actually were on a good trajectory for our kids getting to that 80%. That last column is low risk plus the kids who scored in a college pathway. So that really, we were in a good trajectory for moving towards that 80%, which is what we want to see. So it's very frustrating that unfortunately, you know, COVID happened, and our kiddos have been out of school for a significant amount of days. And so it's looking at, our kids were growing, so it's about how do we now get ourselves back into that routine and the importance of addressing those reading skills. You can see in the middle school years, there's quite a bit of green. It's because so much of those foundational reading skills have been established, is what we would kind of, in an analysis, look at that. So they may not miss as much, but they are missing some of those targeted skills. So our kids who are at high risk and some risk really are missing out on a lot of the skills that they need with their interventions that happen in middle school and high school. And so then math, same way, you see less green in math, which would honestly, when you think about math skills, they build on each other so much, and there is such a progression of math skills, that there could be quite a few skills that they have missed from March to when they are testing again in the fall. So again, shows you how important those foundational skills are for us to make sure we're maintaining those. And then the final thing that I just wanted to share is, Fastbridge has a huge amount of reports that we can gain using this data, but I wanted to just highlight a few of what we use the most. The screening to intervention report, our teachers can use that to be able to determine, what skills do I need to focus on my whole class, or small groups, or specific individual students? And it also gives you intervention ideas, not necessarily the program that they should be doing, but the skills that the kids should be doing and what that might look like as far as their intervention needs would be. It also, from this report, they can create progress monitoring groups. Those kids who are in some risk and definitely high risk will also be progress monitored by our teachers to be able to ensure that the interventions that we're providing for them, they're continuing to see growth. The class list report, a teacher can take a view of their full class, has all of their screenings on one page, which is super valuable for our teachers to be able to use that. The automaticity data would be really your kind of grammar data for reading, letters, sounds. What we would get into is how words are put together and how they're pulled apart. And then for math, it would be computation. And so you can drill down to be able to see, even though a child may be scored overall at some or low risk, there might be some specific areas that they are low in, and that's important information for our teachers to have, so that when they're working with kids in small groups, they can still be helping kids in all of the areas of their deficits, not just those kids who scored overall low. And then the student-at-a-glance report, our sped teams are using this to be able to see what are the specific skill areas that they have shown growth in, and what areas might they still be deficit in. But they can help use that to determine what kinds of compensatory services that they might need to provide for students with IEPs. And then it's also a great tool for our problem-solving team conversations. So there's a lot that Fastbridge does give us, and so we're super excited that we have this data to be able to work with. Any questions?
Is any of this data used at conference time?
Yes. The teachers, although I will caution that this conference time, there may not be as a huge focus on that, because our main focus for conference time would be, yes, what skills are they missing? There are some specific skills, but it really needs to, will be more on the social-emotional piece of our kids. How are they doing with the process that we are in as our hybrid learning? But then definitely, yeah, the screening to intervention report is the one that they could, they wouldn't show the parents the screening to intervention report, because it has other student information on there. There is a family report. We just haven't given enough professional development, so some teachers might use that family report, and some may just kind of refer off of it.
Dean, if you would scroll back up for me just to the reading data. Yep, right there. So I wanted to indicate a couple of things, and we'll use this screen back here.
Brian, can you step over to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
So as you look at this, it's important to recognize how much declination, I mean, there's one that stayed even, but we're talking about 10 points, 6 points, 17 points, 10 points. We had an increase there, but then another reduction at 6 points. Very few times did we see an increase in the level of where we wanted our students. And we've talked about assessment data quite a bit in this. We saw ourselves getting better. We knew we were getting better. We were on the verge of being where we wanted to be. I bring this up because it ties in directly to the next conversation that we're going to have about the need for our students to be in school full-time. As much as we can spend time with them in three hours dealing with reading and math, it doesn't create the same learning environment as when we have a student for the full day. We can chunk our learning, we can take some breaks, we can do some things, versus trying to compress everything into a short period of time. So it's important for us to consider this data when we start looking at our return to school full-time. I also think you can look at this data, and so remember that the reading piece of this, math is a little bit different, but the reading piece of this, when we look at our MAP assessments, so I'm going to draw some correlation to MAP and what we see here, our MAP assessments over the course of time have not looked great, second grade through eighth grade. And then all of a sudden, we kind of meet expectations, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade. So remember that what happens in MAP is they don't continue to increase per grade level at that time. There's kind of a leveling field of, here's where they need to be, and by the time we get to juniors, we're where MAP says we need to be. This is not a whole lot different in terms of reading, and we begin to see this taking shape and understanding what we're doing. So it's not, I want to make sure that when we look at this data, even though you see a lot of green here, it's not necessarily that all of a sudden, there's this huge jump from ability from elementary to middle and high, like all of a sudden, they learn how to read. It's just kind of the way the assessments work. And what we need them to learn how to read in fifth grade, it's taking us a little while to get them to where they need to be, which has historically been an issue with our district, which is why it's so important for us to recognize that we were getting closer over here before COVID-19, so that those numbers on the other side, 6 through 12, are more reflective of what's really happening, if that makes sense. But that's the crazy data of this type of assessment.
Okay. Any other questions for Mrs. Bybee about the data she presented?
I did have a couple of questions. First of all, so I know sometimes when we look at the information you present, we're supposed to look at it like diagonally, so you can compare, like the first grade is now, you would compare it to the second grade. So these two numbers that are in a box together, are those, have you already done that for us? So that's the exact same students that we're comparing?
Right.
Or is it?
Same cohort.
Same cohort.
Same cohort. So it wouldn't be this second grade compared to last year's second grade? It would be those students moved forward?
So if you look at this one right here, this is first graders at Garfield last year and second graders this year.
In winter.
Okay, okay.
Same group of kids.
I just wanted to make sure I was tracking.
So a little bit different, too, just to realize that second grade, those second grade numbers, remember, they're a little bit different test. They don't take the A reading. But they're still showing how many kids are at high risk and are at some risk.
Okay. And then one more little question, just so I can try and understand this on the data presented. So some of the boxes are green. How do you decide which boxes to make green?
So we made them green if there was a positive movement. So like the high risk, if the number basically went down, we have less kids that are at high risk.
Because it's the same students.
And that's the same students, right.
Okay, I got it now.
Okay.
Okay. And then my last question. I know that I had wondered this, just as a parent looking at my kids' work when I'm seeing things, and now then, what you're saying, it makes me wonder as a board member. So what are we doing, like what are you doing about that work that they missed or those concepts? Because obviously, she was supposed to learn something in first grade last year, and she's no longer in first grade. And so that second grade teacher isn't used to having to teach that, but they're marking things wrong on the paper because she doesn't know how to do that. How are we trying to make up for that?
So let's take, for instance, in math, it is recommended, and this is what we've talked with our teachers about, that you're not going to go back and teach all of those skills that they've missed. But what you're going to do is, as that, what we did last year, one of the things we did last year as part of our curriculum map, is they looked at the standard, and they looked at, what are the prerequisite skills for that standard? What do the kids need to know? So this year, they might have to do some pre-teaching before they would get into, let's say, whatever they would be doing for the concept for second grade. They might have to do some pre-teaching before they move into that specific second grade content. Same thing with reading. We're not thinking that we're just going back and taking, you know, the first four, five, six weeks to make up those skills that they missed. But as they're working with their current grade-level instruction and their current grade-level standards, they look to see, and this is super helpful for them, because it drills down to specific skills, what are those skills that those kids are missing? So let's say during guided reading time, if we're in reading, or small group time, I could pull a group of kids together, and if I know that one of my little kids is missing three skills, then I may be focusing on that, those skills first, or at the end of that small group time. Or it could even be some independent time based on what the needs are of those kids. So it really is addressed through individual work, small group, but then also with whole group, because there might be some skills that the entire group missed. So as a whole group, then you may be going through those skills first before you move into some of those grade-level skills.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. It does.
It's really about narrowing down. A lot of times, our instruction and when we plan is very wide, what we do. So it's very much about thinking about, what are our essential standards that we know in second grade that our kids need to learn? What are those skills that they may have missed? So our teachers did have an opportunity also to say to, for instance, the first grade teachers, they listed out, what are the skills that we did not get to in fourth quarter? So those second grade teachers have that, and we did that all the way through.
Okay, good.
Where our grade-level teachers specified out for the current teachers, here are the skills that we have missed in reading and math. And so that way, teachers have something to go off when they're planning. They can see, okay, well, last year, they didn't get to this, so we need to plan a few extra days to be able to jumpstart to catch those skills that they may have missed.
Okay. I think that's very important, that we try, I mean, obviously, we're not going to be able to make that up, and it's going to take time, but I really think that we need to make sure that we're focusing on those things, because it's just like any other situation, if you don't deal with a small problem, it's just going to keep building until it's like a huge problem.
Absolutely. And that's where those foundational skills, there's so many of those foundational skills. Many kids will pick those up just through whole group work, but it's our kids that are at high risk and some risk that we worry about.
Thank you.
You bet.
I have a question. I didn't have one until you answered that question.
Okay.
It triggered something. And I may be way off base. Sometimes I am. But you said that we missed skills end of last year, which I agree with, okay? And I'm focusing on elementary at this point in time. I think it applies K through 12. We're in such a condensed schedule right now. When you say we're going back and picking up and we're spending time, I'm concerned that we haven't had that luxury to have that time. So I guess the question is, you say we're going to look at this data, which I think is great, okay, so teachers can pick this apart. Do we have a PD day where they can, or is that a Friday that they're going to be focusing on this? As we speak next to transition to get our students back in full-time, and let's call it regular school, if you will, then I think it is important that we Then I think it is important that we, we have teachers have the time to look and say, you know, and not that we would have an individual plan for each student, but I think that's kind of what we're talking about here, right? What you're saying is you got to know where each student's at so that as we get back into full time, we can pick up those skills you're missing. Have we allocated time in PD or Fridays or something for teachers to focus on that?
Well, to this point, it would be your PLC times on Fridays, but I will tell you, a lot of teachers don't wait for Friday. But they, they actually start having those conversations within their grade level teams. Or even just within their, I know our coaches, Mrs. Day and Mr. Carlson, I know that they have been working with teachers, some who already wanted to get into their data, say, now, you know, help me with grouping. I know our title teachers have supported our teachers in doing that. So having a dedicated time would be our Friday PLCs, but I will tell you, the majority of teachers are already doing this.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Bybee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next, Dr. Kobsen is going to present a plan for reopening full-time attendance in person.
Dean, let's look at gating criteria first. So I wanted to add this before we actually get into a plan to reopen, to kind of show what that gating criteria is. And remember, this is the KSDE gating criteria that was, that was created. And there's been a lot of conversation recently about increased cases and positive cases within our community, which is, which is certainly happening and, and something that you can see. So if you, if you look back here, you can see that over the course of the last few weeks, we saw this spike on September 20th. Since then, we've seen a declination. So this information came out at 12, 12:30 today. So we've gone from, and remember, this is the, the positive cases per 100,000 persons in the community, right? So they multiply to 100,000 so that they can, they can have a consistent value across every community in the, in the state of Kansas. So what this is indicating is that 234.9 people out of 100,000 people in Franklin County would have been positive at this point in time. So you can see that that has quickly eroded by 100 persons over the course of the last week. And you can see that again, last week, this two-week percentage got back down to 4%. I would tell you that you have to recognize what the data means. So as we saw this spike right here, we saw increase in testing. Right? And so remember that this value right here is the number of people that tested positive versus the number of people that tested. So when we saw the increase in testing and we didn't necessarily see a huge amount of those people testing positive, even though we saw more, the increase in testing created a reduction in percentage of positive tests. Okay, so again, we're green there and then we have hospital beds here, which is, has remained pretty constant across the way. And we are now seeing the trend down, even though what we are, what we are hearing is more and more positive, but the trend in our community is actually down for positive cases, at least according to Kansas Department of Health and Environment website. And those numbers are coming directly from the county to KDHNE. What I will tell you is that as I've presented this gating criteria to multiple times, if you look back at the last board meeting, you will see that these numbers are different, even though they show up on the same date, because as information continues to come in, they go back and fill in the gaps with new information. So as of today at 12:30, this is the newest information that KDHNE has provided. So that's our, our gating criteria. Currently, we're in the yellow for a two-week percentage, but again, not seeing huge increases. We haven't, haven't, other than the one time, been above 10% there. And even at that, it's a moderate level for those. So predominantly green, seeing a decrease in the number of positive cases. And having conversations with Dr. Ransom as often as I do, trying to gain his expertise and his advice and whether or not we should be talking about reopening our schools. He continues to recognize that it is a, a need for us to have, have students in school full time. Now, the caveat to that is that he also recognizes that there may come a time when we can't go to school because of this virus and he cautions me on that all the time. But initially, the, the conversation is go with your plan, do what you need to do. Because he believes that our students shouldn't, should be in school. I will tell you that that's probably him talking to me as Dr. Ransom and not necessarily the county health advisor. But I think for the most part, his, his belief systems are one and the same, so.
I do have a question. I have people ask me all the time, where do the OU students fit into this? Do they go back, do their numbers go back to their counties? Or do they stay with Franklin County?
They stay in Franklin County.
Okay.
And if you look at the Franklin County website, they typically keep, keep us up to date on the number of, of positive assessments or positive tests that come from Ottawa University. So if you, if you look at the gating criteria, if you go to the KDHNE or the Franklin County website, you can, you can disaggregate data based upon age. So there's a, a large portion that is the 18 to 24 age range. There are a couple that are high school, middle school age kids and, and that's been something that we've discussed. But the vast majority of the positive cases in that age range coming from Ottawa University. And certainly, that's something that we inherit when we have a, a university community. And, and, you know, it's no different than what Lawrence and Manhattan and some of the other communities are going through at this point in time as well. But certainly, it, it adds to the data. But again, I think if, if what we were seeing was huge spikes in our student population, the, the word from the county health department would probably be much different.
What, what did you say the TIR, what do those letters stand, what acronym is?
Uh, so this is the, the, I can't remember what TIR stands for, but ultimately what it is, is the test rate per 100,000. It's a positive test. So if you, yeah, click on school gating metrics there. And so it'll be the first one on your left as it comes up. Scroll down there.
Trend and incident.
Yeah, trend and incident rates. So ultimately, it's telling you how many positives you have per 100,000 persons. So because Franklin County only has 27,000, 24,000, whatever it happens to be, there's a multiplier that they, that they add to it or multiply to it to get to 100,000 people to create a, a common value. And so there you can see what, what the data looks like. If you were to, Dean, if you were to click out of that and just go to Franklin County, you're going to have to click off all and. So what you'll see here is, is two different things. So you see, one, your trend data, which would tell you that your trend is going down. When you click on that, you will also get your TIR data. So 148 per 100,000 people is the, is the county rate in a decreasing trend in terms of the number of new cases. So again, and that information was updated about 12:30 today and you can see that it's always a week behind. Okay? Any questions on that stuff? If not, we'll go back to the plan. So the, the reopen plan looks like this. And so just a couple of things here. I didn't put teacher names on the staffing because it hasn't been approved in the personnel report as of yet. So that PR that you see right there indicates that those are in the personnel report. The, the plan right now would be to return to full time at the elementaries on October 26th, which is two Mondays from today. So all of this week, all of next week, return, return the following week. The middle school return a week after that, high school return on the first week of, of the second quarter. In order to do this, we need to have some staffing changes and, and that is predominantly due to how we are addressing remote learners. So there are still a number of remote learners that we need to, that we need to make sure that we take care of. But we can't do so independently of the schools without skewing class sizes for each other. So one of the, one of the concerns that I heard and, and Melidia brought it up last time was transition of staff. We spent a lot of time talking about how do we minimize transitions and there honestly, just no way around it to try to minimize class sizes. So what we're talking about is, is really seven, seven position changes that occur here. One would be a transfer to kindergarten at Sunflower. This would be an in-person position as an existing member moving to kindergarten. Remember that the negotiated agreement would indicate that we have to open any position to current staff for an opportunity to transition before we open it out publicly. That's been something that's been in the negotiated agreement for quite some time. So when we knew that we needed kindergarten, we had a, a transfer there that was interested. And so that took place. We also have the addition of kindergarten at Lincoln. That Lincoln staff member will be a remote instructor for kindergarten across the district. A, a transfer to first grade at Sunflower, a transfer to third grade at Lincoln. Again, those two are both in-person, a transfer to third grade that will do remote at Lincoln. Again, that will be in that particular case, that you will see that there are two remote teachers at, at Lincoln. And so in, in the third grade, so you can see that identified on this, this piece right here. Part of that is just where those people fell in. So we'd initially talked about placing a remote instructor at Garfield. But because there was a transfer there, they were already existing at Lincoln, we left them at Lincoln. So it's why you see skewed numbers in terms of sections. Doesn't change class sizes for them, but it just changes where they're housed. So there are two positions that are still open and they're, they're open publicly right now for us to, to address. One is third grade at Sunflower. That is open due to a transfer that, that took place. And one is in, at Lincoln for fourth grade, again, due to a, a transfer. So what this means as we go through the staffing piece is that we have identified class sizes and what you can see are the average class sizes throughout. So none of them, with the exception of one, one, two, are going, three, are going to get below 15. But they're pretty good class sizes in the grand scheme of things. We would have to hire 11 new staff to get everybody below 15. And then you would have to transition students from building to building. So it would be an awful lot. It would be an economic nightmare. And we believe that we can do so and still create safe environments for our kids and our staff with, with fairly low class sizes. So as you see, what you see up here is that there are basically 15 kids per class in three sections. So Garfield across the board is 15 and three, 15 and three, 15 and three, 16 and three, 16 and three, 14 and two. Okay? And that too has been there all year long with, with just the way that we transition. Lincoln has 17 and four sections, but one of those sections is the remote instructor. So there's really 17 and three sections, 16 and three, 19 and two, 16 and what would be three because two of those are remote, 17 and three, 19 and three because one of those is remote. Okay? So you have four teachers, but one of them is remote. They're just housed at Lincoln. So when you see the one remote instructor, what this would mean is that all the fifth graders in our district will have a Lincoln teacher as their remote instructor. Okay? And it's just going to be a, kind of an odd thing that we're going to have to do. Sunflower has 13 and three different sections at kindergarten, 16 and three plus a remote section, 18 and two plus a remote section, 14 and three, 19 and three with a remote section and 15 and four. And so Lincoln and Sunflower both still have fairly significant fifth grade classes, which is the only two classes that we've had left before transition back to three sections full time. So what that means for remote is that in kindergarten, there are still 15 students in that one remote section. There will be one remote teacher for all district kindergarten. There is one remote teacher for the 15 kids in first grade. One remote teacher for the 21 kids in, in second grade. There are 31 remote teachers in third grade, which is why we still see two remote teachers up here in the third grade. You see that we've got two. It's fairly large class to deal with remotely. If you've ever watched a remote class, it's crazy, to, to say the least. And then you have 14 down here with one remote teacher and 22 down here with one remote teacher. So that is how we plan to address what we're doing with kids coming back full time. Transportation hasn't worked out. We will continue to have assigned seating on the buses. We will continue to, to ask kids to wear masks on the bus. Our buildings have it figured out how we maneuver kids in and out. It's a little bit different plan at each building, so you're not going to hear me talk about this, where we're going to do it at Sunflower and so on and so forth. We'll leave those things to the principals in each of those buildings. But in terms of staffing and creating a situation and environment in which our kids can go back to school full time, pre-K through five, we didn't put pre-K numbers up here, but pre-K is involved in this as well. Pre-K through five, the plan is in place for our students to, to go back to school full time. So I think that there are some important things to, to consider as we go through this. One will be that we will have some classes that have more kids in them than, than other classes will. So I don't know that it will occur, but currently we, we work in a, in a system in which we really have no, no question that if a student tests positive, that there is enough space between all of our kids, we'll not have to quarantine any of our kids in each of those classrooms. In this environment, there's a real possibility that if we can't keep them distant enough, that if a student tests positive, those sitting directly around them may also have to be quarantined. This is the give and take of the situation, right? And certainly not something that we have control over. When I've had the conversation with Dr. Ransom and Nick Robbins about this, they, they've, they've continued to, to assess that if we're wearing masks, if we're doing, doing hand washing, if we're disinfecting our spaces, that we're probably not going to have to worry about those things. If we can guarantee that those things are in place and that we don't have students congregating around one another. But it is something that we're going to have to, to keep an eye on and it's something that we need to be aware of could happen. Currently in this state, we don't worry about it because we're distant apart from one another. The, the trade-off, I guess, is getting all of our kids back in school full time and, and still ensuring, if you, if you look at what KDH puts out, what they will indicate is that wearing masks and disinfecting and, and sanitizing your hands constantly creates a very low, a very low risk of any type of transmission. I think they use the term extremely low risk, right? So that's something that we considered when we went into this environment. It's extremely low risk that we would have any situations there as long as we're following our own protocols, making sure that we take care of our students. So that is something that I, again, I think we need to be cognizant of as we make a decision about a, a return plan. But for the most part, I don't think that we will have to worry about it. I think that our kids are safe in our schools. I think we feel good about them being safe. Our teachers have done an amazing job of, of creating and following the protocols that we have in our buildings. And I think the, for the most part, they're excited about getting our kids, kids back. Doesn't mean there's not anxiety, doesn't mean there's not fear. It doesn't mean that, that those things don't exist and that there aren't still questions that need to be answered. But I think teachers are teachers and they're ready to have their kids back to where they, they can do their jobs and, and do the things that they, they became teachers to do. What this does mean for everybody else is that we had said last time, and I'm, I'm bringing this up because I know that at some point in time, Melidia is going to go, you said this. And what I said last time was, if we make this change, we will not go back to hybrid. It would be way too hard to go back to hybrid. I said that, I know I said it. That's not true. So we, we, we've spent some time trying to figure out what happens if we have major outbreaks and we have to go back to a system that is better than remote. And if we have to come back to hybrid, then we come back to hybrid. I know we make people mad if that's what we have to do, but I think it makes them less mad than if it's full remote. So we can, we can switch to a hybrid in this model if we need to. The lone caveat is that the current hybrid model aligns all five buildings to families. So if your high school kid is going morning, your middle school kid is So, if your high school kid is going morning, your middle school kid is going morning, and your elementary kid is going morning. That was the amazing, incredible work that all of our principals did to try to ensure that we were as easy on families as we could be. When we change back to this model and we put teachers back in place, and middle school has to change their, their scheduling component altogether, and high school works through some things as well. If we have to make a quick change back, we cannot guarantee that a high school kid will be morning and any siblings down the road will also be morning. It may very well be that a high school kid is morning, a middle school kid is afternoon, or an elementary kid is, is afternoon. We will work through that as best we can to be able to try to, to maneuver people around and, and do so, but we can't guarantee it like we've been able to do in, in this particular situation. Okay? So, the last piece is, we continue to work with the middle school. They, what, what they're working on is a transition to remote instruction in the same manner that the high school is doing it, which is the teachers in the class are also teaching a remote class. Currently, what they have is a remote class period. So, if I was a seventh grader and I had science remotely, then there was a science teacher with a specified period that was remote science, and everybody was going to that period. In this particular case, you'll go back to their regular schedule. And if you have four kids that are remote, they're going to be in your class via computer. So, you might have fifteen kids in person and you might have four kids remotely. So, that'll be the way that we have to work through that to ensure that we can. But the high school has been doing it for the entire six weeks that we've been back to school without major issues. So, it can certainly be done. We continue to work through staffing issues if we're going to need to make them. We may need some additional aids and some additional supports in buildings, but at this point, it doesn't look like we'll need additional staff like we did. And predominantly, we needed the additional staff at the elementaries because of the manner in which we provided remote and tried to ensure that we keep those class sizes at a, at a relative minimum the best we can. So, the last piece of this that we probably need to, to discuss is how quarantines will work moving into the future. So-
Or currently.
What's that?
Or currently.
Or currently. Yeah. So, what, what's happening right now is that if a student tests positive, they have a fourteen-day mandatory quarantine. It's actually isolation, I think, when you have a positive test, but whatever, semantics. If you have an exposure, it's also fourteen days. So, there are two different processes that, that take place. And I'm gonna grab my notes here just to make sure that I, that I don't get them wrong. One of which is mandated by the state, and there is no opportunity to maneuver out of it. If the exposure is intrascholastic, meaning another school has a positive test and we compete against that school, it's mandatory fourteen days, no questions asked. That is a state thing. So, that piece of it doesn't change. So, as an example, if our football team hosted another school's football team and somebody from that team tested positive, everybody that's on the field that day is gonna be quarantined for fourteen days from the date of exposure. Okay? So, if we don't find out until the following Wednesday, it's fourteen days from the Friday of the exposure. And intraschool events, that's the way that it's gonna work. And interschool events, in which we're dealing our students, all USD two ninety students, exposure to USD two ninety students, we have the opportunity to have a choice. One would be that you can take on the fourteen-day quarantine from the date of exposure and just deal with a fourteen-day quarantine. The other would be to take a PCR test after your seventh day. So, after the seventh day, and this is not a free test. This is something that families are gonna have to make a choice to do. And I've had multiple conversations, Ottawa family physicians today about how we can do this. And I don't know that there's any way around it, but this is an opportunity that people will have. That after the seventh day, they can, they can schedule a visit to Ottawa family physicians for the PCR test to be read by the state. So, this is not the saliva test, not the quick test. This is, this is the antibodies test that, that they now have available. Typically, tho, that response is back within two days. If it is negative, then they would be cleared to return to, to school and activities. So, basically nine days at the most, possibly ten, depending on where it fell. But that would be something that they would have to take control of on their own. Sign up for, or, or schedule an appointment with one of the doctors, take one of the tests. Doctors would have it read and then OFP would, would contact them back. Not every, and my understanding is that not every entity has access to this particular test. So, this is a kind of a, an Ottawa family physicians thing, as much as I understand it. The county will not accept the saliva test from Gardner. So, the quick test from Gardner is not going to, not going to be accepted. It's not gonna change any of these things. My understanding is currently, the only one that's gonna make a difference is, is the, the PCR test through OFP. Again, if that result is negative, students could return to school. If that result is positive, it resets their quarantine to fourteen days from the positive date. And anybody that they've been in contact with from that day moving forward is now also going to be quarantined for fourteen days, which would not be different than, than any of the other situations. But it does mean that, so, something to think about with this is that if you are asymptomatic, you have no idea that you have symptoms, right? And you have gone through seven days and now nine days of quarantine with no symptoms, but you take this test. And on day ten, you get your results back and it says that you're positive, but you're asymptomatic. You were four days away from being cleared to return anyways, but now you're going to have another fourteen-day quarantine. So, there are some positives and some negatives to this. Positive is that if everything goes well, you can, you can return in, in quicker time. Negative is that it might actually result in more time out for you. But, that's the conversation that we had with Dr. Ransome today in terms of how we begin to address trying to minimize the amount of time that our students are quarantined while still creating a safe environment for everybody else. I don't know everything about this. This was a brand-new conversation to me, starting at about twelve-thirty today. And about every thirty minutes thereafter, a different phone call regarding it. So, we'll continue to learn more about what this is. But it does begin to impact the reopen plan in terms of how we deal with quarantines. And then we continue to address the quarantine issue in our community to try to, to, one, ensure the safety of all of our students and staff, but also to ensure that our students are in school when they need to be in school and as, as often as possible in a safe environment. So, questions about reopening?
Well, I'm all in favor of getting back in school. I'm disappointed we aren't bringing the whole district back on the twenty-sixth, as you know. I think that, that would've been ideal. And, second of all, as you know, I'm a proponent of trying to expedite the quarantine process to get kids back in the classroom. I, I'm not being negative on the remote, but day one of remote didn't go well today. So, I'm not a fan. Haven't been a fan up until now, and I'm certainly not a fan of remote. So, I think that we are hindering our kids doing remote. So, I think it's great that we're reopening our buildings. We're bringing them back in. I just wish we were bringing them back on the twenty-sixth. And I certainly think we ought to be working on ways to mitigate quarantine. Second of all, we're in a deal of, and you and I spoke of this today, so I'm gonna say it publicly, and I hope that we do this. And that is, we have to understand we're in the COVID twenty-twenty. We're not in twenty-fifteen. And our educational processes need to ensure we're not putting kids in jeopardy that if they come to an educational event, such as school, that we don't put them in quarantine because something we did as a teacher that puts them in quarantine. And that's what's disappointing because Friday, we had that event. And I hope that as we take this two-week or three-week or four-week, that we emphasize to our staff that we're all in this together. And so, our decisions do impact our students. If we make a decision that impacts our students going to quarantine, they're in remote learning, that impacts their education for fourteen days. And I think that's what we really gotta stay away from.
Yeah. Wouldn't disagree.
I'll get off my soapbox.
I actually had two questions from what he said there. I, I wanted to ask what the thought process is behind keeping the, the middle school delayed till then, till the second, and then the high school till the ninth, I believe. Why, why is that? Why do you think that will be best?
Uh, so, there's a couple of things. One, the, the rate of quarantine at middle and high is far different than at the elementaries. Currently, we're, we're talking about twelve percent of our students are on quarantine between the middle school and high school. So, that is, that is certainly something to, to consider, especially as we go in there and we start thinking about how we transition kids. So, something to think about, and again, in this particular model that we're in. The, the hybrid model allows us to, to indicate that all kids are distanced from one another, wearing masks, doing this, that, and the other thing. We've had little to no issue, with the exception of Friday's issue, in which a student in class created a quarantine for another student in, in a particular class. When we come back full-time, we're going to have classes that are going to have more kids than them. When we start talking about a high school kids going from period one to period two, to period three, to period eight, if there are four kids in each of those classes that are sitting around a student that we may have to, to quarantine because of a positive test, it's thirty-two kids right off the bat. That is something that we don't take lightly and something that we wanna make sure that we have in control as we move forward. This plan that we have for the elementaries, we want to begin to see if it, if it impacts our schools in any way other than what we think that it's going to impact them. How do we deal with transportation? How does, how does lunch look? How do all of these things look? It's much easier for us to address these things at the elementaries when we have, when we have classes that are, that are co-horted. So, all of those kids are the same kids. If you're in Mrs. Wingert's fifth-grade class, she's got the same, that's gonna be fifteen kids in her class every day, all day. And we don't have to maneuver around. Middle school and high school, you're gonna have a teacher that's got a hundred and twenty-five kids running through that, that classroom every day, which means that we're, we have to, we have to clean differently. We have to address how they move differently. We have to address transitions in hallways differently. There's a lot that goes on. That's why we're, we've pushed it back a little bit to make sure that we get the elementaries in and ready to go. Middle and high, we can, we can address on, on the onset. The other thing that we really begin to notice, and this is gonna be something that the, that the board can make a decision on, is that the impact of learning on our middle school and high school students is drastically different than it is on the elementary students. Our students and our staff have found a way to navigate remotely. You talked about it not working today very well. Remote instruction isn't the greatest thing in the world, right? But, it hasn't hindered our students in the same way that it's hindered our elementary students. That much is fact, and we can see that on our, on our assessment data. We have to get our elementary kids back in school. If our middle school and high school kids have to go remotely because of some other things that are going on, or hybrid, I, I enter mix hybrid and remote because part of their day is remote, then that's something that, that we can navigate through without large issues. There are going to be issues if we go for very long, but it's something that we can overcome if we need to at the secondary level, where if this happens K one and two for much longer, we're going to have large deficits to overcome with our kids that may not be overcomable. And that, that would be a very difficult thing. So, hopefully, that makes sense as to why we're doing it.
And then my second question, based on the, the incident on Friday with that, what have we changed or what guidance was given? It's kinda like, you know, fool me once, okay, but twice. So, what, what are we doing?
So, we have a meeting tomorrow with principals that will begin to address this even more. But the, the conversation that Mrs. Whitaker and I have had is really centered around the, the message that we sent to coaching staff at, over the course of the summer in terms of needing to, to separate distance, make sure we take care of our kids, having to be the same conversation that exists within our physical education classrooms as well. So, that'll be the, the greatest piece of this moving forward is to ensure that that same mentality exists in our PE classrooms that it does in our athletic programs.
I know it worked really well for the athletic programs-
Yes, it did.
-prior to the, the game starting. So, I, I know that was effective.
Ryan, I do have a question. Regarding the open gyms-
Yes.
Where that also caused, caused an incident, are those going to continue? Obviously, the girls is at a standstill. But I think at this point, for the safety of the kids, we need to look at some other options there. I mean, the academics are definitely our top priority.
I would tell you that open gym is not run by the school. Open gym is a parent-provided opportunity.
Right. But we facilitate allowing them to use the facilities.
I would caution you that the first step in saying no to that is the first step in saying we're not gonna have athletics. So, it, that is a choice. I think Harold said it today in conversation with him. Parents make that choice. We've, the only way that we facilitate it basically is to give them a space to do so. We do that with ORC. We do it with, with everybody else. We do not facilitate the, the process nor what is expected of students in that arena. That is, that is a parent-led program that is, that is approved by CACIA. So, it's some, it's certainly something that we can discuss. Again, I think that, that we begin to walk the fine line, which what I've heard from our board overall is to, to not, and, and I, again, I guess I could've misunderstood, is that we wanna do everything that we can to ensure that athletics and, and academics contin, continue to be married and we can provide both. If, if open gyms go away, certainly, we probably create a safer environment. But I think that you begin to open yourself up for those students finding a different way to do it. At least in this situation, we can control that you have to have masks coming in, that we, if you're gonna use our space, these guidelines have to be adhered to.
But are they used the entire time while they're in there?
Well, the guidelines would indicate that they shouldn't be used. That if they're exerting energy, that they shouldn't be wearing masks. But we can, we can manage how they come in and out of there. But, that, if that's something that this board wants to address and make a statement on, on open gyms, we can, we can certainly do it. You're not gonna get any pushback from me. You're not gonna, it's not gonna happen. So, I really have no problems with, with saying that, that an open gym is, is something that, that we can consider not providing anymore. I would caution everybody here that it begins to open up a completely different conversation for something that, that we all know was coming, right? In every single sport, at some point in time, we are probably going to have a positive test and we are probably gonna have a quarantine situation. We haven't had a sport yet that hasn't. The exception to maybe cross-country.
Cross-country.
Golf.
Wrong.
Ultimate.
Wrong.
Oh, really? Golf.
We've got quarantine now.
Oh, you do now.
Oh, okay.
Let, let me clarify. Is there anybody on the board that would like to have a further conversation about not allowing open gym?
I, I had a, a question on that from Shanda's comments. We facilitate it so when those students, and I'm not even sure what time it starts or whatever, are those students temperature-checked and the, the hand sanitizer at the door to get, to get in? Just like we are into the school?
Yep.
Okay. And is that a school employee that does that, or is it?
There shouldn't be any school employees in the, in the room.
It's the host of the night.
The coach will help with the check-in, but they cannot be involved in the actual scrimmage. The, the health and safety protocols, they are involved in getting kids checked in and then they leave. The actual open gym itself is not run by the coach that's involved in that sport.
Okay. I, I-
Those are CACIA guidelines, so we-
Right, right. I just feel- I just feel that that should be, if we are going to continue those.
We take attendance every single one of those things, and they are health screening, temperature-checked for every one of those events.
By a USD 290 employee for the screening.
We haven't been making the kids wear them while they're exerting that energy, and that's the same thing in PE class as well as in our athletic programs, and that's where some of the quarantine issues have come from. It's from not forcing the kids to wear masks while they participate in the program.
Right, I just wasn't sure, since we don't actually hold those practices, if we were doing that or not.
I'll go on record, and you did quote me correctly. I think sports is different than education, and I think as a parent, we have our kids choose to go out for sports. And if you choose to go out for sports, you accept that risk, okay? My disappointment, as you know, is what happened Friday that happened in an educational setting. So, on a sports field, we accept that risk as a parent and a student going forward. I just think that from an educational process, we need to really examine what went on and how, as Melidia said, we don't repeat that in the future. And that's the only reason I bring it up, is I just want to highlight that we address it now so that we don't have a repeat of it in the future, because I do accept that it happened, I just don't want to see it happen again.
And Shanda brings up a great point worthy of discussion, and I think, and I certainly appreciate that.
I have just gotten some comments on it. I definitely don't have that athletic child in school right now.
So, one of the things that I think is important to remember with open gyms, more so this year than any other year, we've had the conversation with our coaching staff that participation in summer activities, participation in weight rooms, participation in conditioning, participation in open gyms should have no impact upon whether or not that student meets the requirements to participate in that event. So, if there are cutting criteria, depending on what you want to call it at each, that that criterion should not include whether or not they came to open gyms or any of those things. It should be based upon skills, that there are measurable outcomes that indicate, here's who made the team, here's who didn't make the team, not just by some, here's who I like and here's who came to this and that. So, more so than any other year, we've had many of those conversations to address how we deal with students choosing a safer alternative to participating in conditioning and so on and so forth. So, it shouldn't have an impact upon them should they choose not to participate in any of those things.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
And I'm going to kind of pull us back a little bit. Are there any other questions specific to this reopen plan before we take some action?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. You mentioned the students in class with their masks on once more together, that they would be required to quarantine if there was a positive test. I would like you to elaborate on.
Might be required to quarantine. So, what we know now is that the current model indicates that if they are six feet apart, and they have masks on, and they're doing these other things, that there's no question about whether or not they quarantine. So, as we put more kids in there, and they're not necessarily six feet apart from one another all the time, there will be more questions about who should quarantine and who should not. So, that'll be something that we have to work through with the health department to determine.
So, I guess what I'm a little confused, so the CDC guidelines are very clear to say quarantining must take place when you're without a mask, less than six feet apart for longer than fifteen minutes. So, if the kids have the mask on, even if they are closer than that, I'm not sure unless, is that coming, is that a KDHT or?
It's a conversation that we've had with the county to make sure that we're following all of those guidelines and meeting those recommendations. What they're indicating now is six feet with masks. But, again, the communication that we've had is that as long as our students are continuing to wear masks, even if that distance narrows
Right.
that we should still be okay. But, that doesn't mean that it's as clear as where we're at right now. Right now, it's no question, no question whatsoever. We just know that in our classrooms, we're not going to have to quarantine kids. As we have more students in there, we'll have to answer some different questions about how students are situated in their classrooms, so on and so forth.
Okay, okay. I'm going to put another second. And then, I also had a question on the exposure discussion that you had, the intrascholastic and the inter-school. Where does this guidance come from?
I believe it's from the state. I think this was the governor's order. I had that conversation with Dr. Ransom today. He told me there wasn't anything they could do about it, that it was a state order. We heard the same thing from KASB yesterday. I don't know exactly what the order is and where it came from, but that's been the guidance that we've had all along.
Okay.
I can find it for you.
I would appreciate that, if you could send that out to us, and just so that we can be informed and do some further reading on that. And then, what is the plan for remote teachers after, or I guess I should start by saying, is your plan still to end the remote classes at semester, like you said last time?
Well, I think it's worth a conversation to talk about it at semester. The more and more we talk to families, I think the more we hear that there will be a distinct group of parents that want to continue with remote throughout the remainder of the year. I think it's important for us, if we have large volumes, and certainly fifteen kids is the smallest that we have, I think, that probably equates to, yeah, we probably need to continue with a remote environment for those kids. So, currently, the plan would be to continue with a remote environment unless we see some major shift over the course of time. If that is the case, then probably what we do is we utilize those staff to continue to try to keep class sizes at a lower rate through the remainder of the year.
Okay.
So, through technology, I will give kudos, temperatures were taken at open gym going in. So, I think protocol was followed, it was just an unfortunate situation.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? All right, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the plan to open elementary schools full-time on October 26th, OMS on November 2nd, and OHS on November 9th?
So move.
Is there a second? I will second it.
No, I think she, I was going to say, I thought she was going to second it.
Was that a second, Susan? Susan?
Sorry, I can't, I'm having trouble hearing you, so I was turning my volume up.
Okay.
Say second, Susan.
Just say second.
I'll second it. Actually, I think I already seconded it. Okay, I just didn't want to use it, Susan. Okay, so it was moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Julie D'Andrio to approve the plan to open elementary schools full-time on October 26th, 2020, OMS on November 2nd, and OHS on November 9th. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Julie D'Andrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that motion carries six-zero. We are down to section 6.01.
All right, I might invite Megan and Teresa down here if they want to join. Negotiated agreement is finally done, and I want to thank Chantae Kemp and everybody else within the OEA for all their work in developing the final document. If you've ever looked at any of the old negotiated agreements, they're pretty cumbersome, and they did an awesome job of redeveloping this and making it right. But, our goal here is to ratify the document, approve the document that was ratified by the teachers. Dean, if you'd click on the negotiated items there. I just made a real quick rundown of the things that we negotiated for you to remember, and they all show up in the negotiated agreement. But, what we did was we created a form to address complaints, should be utilized with staff in stages three, four, or five of any disciplinary process. That way, the staff can have access to them, understand where the complaints are coming from, and the issues that exist within it. We add an additional year for the stipend for advanced degrees, and an additional $2,000, so a total of $8,000 over four years, and a graduated timeline for those coming into our district, and how much they would receive, depending on where they were at as they became a teacher in USD 290. There was, if you look at the negotiated agreement, the very front, there's a timeline of dates and timelines that are available that really help guide our staff in the things that should happen over the course of time. Doc pay was discussed, and will now reflect the deduction of the daily rate for any contract they missed without the use of leave. So, if they don't use sick or discretionary leave, it is basically the daily rate of pay that will be deducted from their check. Any unused sick leave will have a pay increase from 725 to 850 per hour. I think we also discussed that we'll continue that conversation annually to get that to where it needs to be. We discussed blackout dates and took some of those dates off and made a note as to which ones were continued. We added two additional contract days in replace for snow days being forgiven. So, up until this point, there was no language that would indicate that teachers didn't have to come to work on a snow day. So, we made a trade for two additional contract days for that language to be put in. We also deducted some time from the teacher workday to make it a straight eight-hour-a-day workday for 183 days in '21 and '22. PE and music were added to the daily sub-rate for anybody taking on additional students if a sub can't be provided in the regular classroom. This is in addition to what classroom teachers were already getting, so we added PE and music to that. We removed the statement regarding the rationale for that particular section as to why that was having. There was a whole paragraph there talking about why we wanted to find subs to the best of our abilities and so on and so forth, we took that out. We created a provision that the building leadership team did not have to have a member of the PDC if the member of the PDC decided that they didn't want to be a member of the BLT. Currently, it was that a PDC member had to be on the BLT. Not everybody wanted to do that, but what we made sure is that we had a continual loop of conversation between staff and administration about what we needed in terms of professional development needs for teachers so that we could ensure that that communication continued to move forward. We removed language regarding probationary teachers. If you remember the old language, there was this notion of tenured teachers and non-tenured teachers, so we removed that language and went back to first and second-year teachers and so on and so forth. There was an increased penalty to be released from the contract beyond the specified dates of continuing employment, as well as adjustments for those who needed to exit their contract based upon military leave. So, a couple of changes there. An increased contribution to insurance at $15 a month for all employees taking the insurance benefit, and then the increase to the base salary by two and a quarter percent. That puts us, I believe, just under $42,000 for base pay. Is there anything that I left out?
No, I just wanted, I didn't know I was going to address the board or I ended up cutting my workout clothes.
Dr. Cobb, would you introduce our guests for those that are watching, please?
So, for everybody that's watching at home, you have two very important members of the Ottawa Education Association, the negotiating team. Megan O'Neill, who is a teacher at Lincoln, and Teresa Roberts, who's a teacher at Ottawa High School, working with a number of our alternative students. Both of them very well-respected in their positions and do a great job for our district, and huge parts of the negotiating process. And certainly, we wouldn't be able to do the things that we do for our staff without their help, so we appreciate them very much. But, if I left anything out?
Sure. I just wanted to say thank you to all members of the board. I really appreciate those of you who were able to negotiate on the team with us, and I know it's always tricky then to get that information back as a presentation, so we just really appreciate all of the amazing questions and the support that you give your negotiators. It really allows us as an OEA to work together as a team with our board. So, again, I just want to say how appreciative OEA is, that we have a great relationship, and that we can work together to build the best contract possible for our teachers, which of course then influences our students. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for all that you all do as well. We appreciate that relationship for sure.
I too appreciate all the negotiations and the wonderful exchanges we had during our meetings. It was so nice when we could actually get together again and not have to do it remotely. It was difficult to do that. The other thing I would say is to remember the MOA that we approved that will go along with the contract, but I think will be listed separately on the website for the teachers.
Well, I want to thank you both. I would like to echo the relationship that we have. I do appreciate it. I like the give and take and bouncing ideas off of one another and learning from one another. And please tell Chantae that the negotiated agreement is beautiful. Being a negotiated agreement nerd, I can tell you, I appreciate the beauty of it. It's a nice document.
Well, and as kudos to Linda for leading the board, working with you guys. So, from the board standpoint, Linda, great job, and Melidia, and, okay, I'm hearing no. Okay. So, I was about ready to say thank you to Shanda as well, but seriously, thank you, Linda and Melidia and Shanda for contributing what you did. Great job, great working with you all as well.
I did have one question. I know we're all surprised. I haven't had a chance to go in to the negotiated agreement that you provided. I did notice on number four, you said the word that it will be deducted, that pay. I haven't gone in to see that that is actually what was. I just wanted to make sure before I voted on this.
So, I think it's in the notes, it's everywhere. The deduction is what it is. So, one of the great things that has occurred with OEA is that there is no doubt that there will be some misstep in the negotiated agreement at some point. The notes are so clear. And even if that were to be the case, we would come back and we would have a conversation about what the agreement actually was.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to make sure.
You shouldn't have any issues in voting for the negotiated agreement without reading all sixty pages or whatever, because with the understanding and the knowledge that between all of us, if there is a discrepancy in what the negotiated agreement says, we will come back together as a group and go back to what the belief was when we made that agreement.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure I understood before I voted.
Sure.
And, Melidia, just to add on to that, we, Chantae, myself, and then Chantae, Teresa and I, we really have spent hours going over this with a fine-tooth comb as we've transitioned to a clickable, easy-to-navigate document. It is entirely possible that we missed something, but I promise you, we really, we nailed down all of these specific items that we went over this year, because this is really the core of our changes, so.
And my apologies that I have not had a chance to look at it yet. I will be, and I appreciate all the work that you all did to do that and to fix all the issues that we saw, you know, where the, it was, things were inconsistent
Absolutely.
and getting that cleaned up. I really appreciate that.
And so, when you get in there to really dig through, that table of contents is now clickable, so you should be able to get right directly to the item that you are looking for. And then, I will say, we made some editing changes, and we did note those in the negotiations process and in through our notes, and we kind of just had an agreement that we were going to be able to make some of those changes. So, you might take a look. There are some section titles and some other things that have been reorganized, but everything is very, very clear and spelled out and much more easily accessible than it has been in previous years.
Well, Megan, I like what you said about how you and Chantae sat together and spent hours doing it, because I remember back when I was negotiating for the teachers, Katie Eckroyd and I would sit side by side and read that thing, word by word, make sure everything was in it, including commas.
Well, and I am going to give Chantae some additional credit here, even though she and I spent hours at coffee shops, she did more of this at home on her own time than I could even imagine.
Well, she does, she's done other things that I belong to, she does a wonderful job.
She does.
All right. Is there, did you have something else?
Nope.
Before we take action on this, are there any members that need to recuse themselves from voting on this? Are we good?
No, I don't think it, I think we're okay.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Would somebody like to make a motion that we approve the negotiated agreement as presented?
Oh, I would absolutely like to do that.
I would love to second it.
Perfect. It was moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Melidia Payne that we approve the negotiated agreement as presented. Roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Julie D'Andrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that carries six- And that carries 6-0.
All right. Again, I want to thank Megan and Teresa. You guys are awesome. It is nice and listening to the conversations that other superintendents have about their negotiations process, that ours is as cordial and as friendly and as deep as the conversations are, and like I said, in comparison to some other districts. So I appreciate OEA and everything that you guys do. Make sure that that's the case. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. See you next year.
And we are moving on to 6.02, which is the salary increases for directors and administrative staff.
Okay, so historically, administrators and directors have received the same percentage of raise that the teachers have gotten. So there you see a list of administrators. You'll notice that there are a couple of people who are left off of there. That is because their contracts were developed with a particular price in mind, an agreement in mind prior to the change of the negotiated agreement. So these are the people who will address a salary increase to.
Is there a motion to approve the increases as presented?
So moved. Let Susan have it.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it then.
All right. It was moved by Susan Moore and seconded by Linda Alderman that we approve the increases as presented for directors and administrative staff. Roll call vote, Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that carries 6-0. And we are down to 6.03, Coach Evaluation Tools, and we have.
We're going to let Mr. Phillips come up and share some of his work that he's done.
Dr. Cobb, would you like to introduce Mr. Phillips?
Yes, sure. So I think this is his first time in front of the board tonight. This is the Assistant Principal Activities Director at Ottawa High School, and he's done a phenomenal job this year in working with our staff in a very difficult year to come in and try to address activities. But Mr. Phillips has done a great job, and he's been working really hard on these next two things that you're going to see on the agenda, dealing with coaches and evaluations and ensuring that we have a documented process in place for how we address coaches, as well as the bowling program in 6.04. So I'll turn it over to Sean. Stand by here if you need to.
First, I want to thank everybody for giving me a chance to come and talk about some of the athletics and activities offered at OHS. You should have received a document that talks about our evaluation tool. The current evaluation tool, you might ask, well, why do we need a new one or what is wrong with the old one? The current tool that we've been using certainly has a lot of great qualities about it. We've used it for a long time, and just overall, in my opinion, the profession of being a coach has changed throughout the years. And so there are some certain things that need to be updated or included that maybe weren't originally with the proposed, or the original document that we had. So first, one of the things that I think this tool that I'm proposing here, one of the things that it does is it addresses a whole program. Coaching, our coaches do so much. It's not just practicing games anymore. So there's so many things that they do, and it's such a big job that it's going to include more than just them to be able to run an entire program. So just a few of the things, you're going to see a lot of common things that you might see with any coach evaluation tool if you were to investigate from other districts. But a couple of things that I would like to draw your attention to is if you look at the bottom section of this first page, those bottom two comments there where it says, "Provides necessary instruction and enrichment to assistant coaches." It is essential for a program to be successful that it's more than just one person involved. You have to have assistant coaches that are knowledgeable. You have to have assistant coaches that are willing to participate in whatever endeavor or vision that a head coach might have. But it's the responsibility of that head coach to be able to deliver that message to those assistant coaches so that their vision can be carried out. And so that kind of fits to that bottom part there as far as having a common philosophy of how we're going to manage the team. So it just goes through and helps that coach to communicate with their assistants and how they might further develop their programs in order to better benefit the students at Ottawa High School. Also, if you take a look at the next page there, any high school program, not the next tool, Dean, go back to, there should be another, do we just get the first page?
Just got the first page.
It was an entire, that's okay. It was an entire workbook, and one of the things that listed, that is listed here is establishing communication with feeder programs. Feeder programs from a high school level could be your middle school coaches. We certainly see that there's starting to be more and more youth programs that are getting involved, and I think a head coach having a good relationship with those programs can only help benefit what's going on at the high school level. So I'm not saying that they have to try to run all those things. There are just not enough hours in the day to be able to do that, but there does need to be a connection with those to establish positive relationships, because that helps encourage kids participating as they get into high school activities. So just having that connection with those programs, we've seen the junior cyclones with football. We know Matt Masters for wrestling. There's some club volleyball going on. There's all kinds of things going on. We know that baseball always has the different, lots of different programs that feed into it through the ORC or any other types of organizations. So just getting coaches to kind of connect with those hopefully will allow them to build an even stronger, better program for our students here. And then also, finally, for head coaches, encouraging them to be actively involved in the whole student, not just the fact that they're involved just on the field or court or wherever they're participating, but also helping them to be better students, helping them to be better individuals so that they help teach some of those life lessons and help them proceed towards their graduation and achieving some of their goals for the future. And then the second reason why I like this tool is because if you had the last page here, there would be a section here that talks about goals. Most of those have goals. Just about any evaluation tool you have has goals. But this one asks us in the following year to evaluate, what did we do towards those goals? A lot of program, or a lot of evaluation tools are just going to ask, what are your goals for next year? But then there's no follow-up of have we progressed towards those. So it's just a good reflective piece. I know that reflection is big for learning, and I think that that's going to help coaches learn about what are our weaknesses? How do we go about addressing those so that we can progress as a program and also do what's best for the students at USD 290?
Those of you that want to know, I just updated the actual document, so it's in Board Box now.
Thank you.
I apologize for the confusion there.
Thank you.
But if you refresh your screens, you should have access to it now.
Any question about the head coaching tool there that was listed there?
I will say one thing, and I appreciate your comment, and I've shared this with Dr. Cobb's a recent year or two. I was in a coach, I mean, a parent meeting in the middle school where the coach actually said, "We work on fundamentals here so you can win banners over there in Pointe-Titres High School." And I appreciate the communication that goes between, because I really thought there was in basketball, and I shouldn't have said what sport, but anyway, there really was great communication going back and forth, and there really was teamwork, and I think that's a great, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate that you brought it up, because I think that is important, that we're all in, you know, I've used this term, we're all in this together tonight already. But I really think it is. I mean, it's the, it's working together for one common goal. So thank you for carrying that forward.
No problem. I appreciate it.
And I would agree with what Harold said, you know, about the middle school and the high school working together. I would, I would put caution about how you're talking about other feeder programs. I know that it can become a problem where coaches, well, you were on, this player wasn't on the right traveling team or the right, you know, they have this one team that they like to pick all their people from, and I know that that's a big problem at some other schools, and it could easily be, so I would just put.
Yeah, I agree with you that, you know, showing allegiance to just one particular program is definitely something that you would not want to do. I think the intent here is just to more so build relationships with those kids as they're coming through, and I would encourage coaches to be actively involved with any program that would be with Ottawa students as they're engaging through younger groups. So I would not say that you should promote this one over all the other. You have to go to that one. I would agree with you on that. Any other questions about that one?
I don't think so.
So then the second piece of this, in order to try to develop this whole program that I had mentioned just a little bit ago, is developing those assistant coaches. There were a couple of key things there, or a couple of points that were listed in the evaluation tool that I just showed you. However, it's going to take more than just a checkmark on an evaluation for that to truly happen. So I do feel like there needs to be some type, and I don't know if evaluation is maybe the correct term for that. It might be more of a reflection piece that the head coach should work with their assistants. That way, they can let assistants know what their vision is. Sometimes you get caught up in the daily grind of going through practices and games and things like that, and we don't always do a great job of having those conversations that are going to promote our overall vision for our program, help assistant coaches develop. A lot of assistant coaches, not all, but a lot of assistant coaches might be new to a particular sport, and so they need some knowledge developed. Or if a coach has been an assistant for a long time, sometimes we get into a comfort zone, and we need to have a head coach that says, hey, here's something that we need to think about so that we're always trying to get better. I know as a coach, I always told players that you're either getting better or you're getting worse, so hopefully, we're always trying to get better all the time, because there is never a point in life where we can't learn something new and where we can't be working towards some goal. Just when we think we have something figured out, then surely there's something else that we need to pay attention to, because we would definitely have to have work in that area. So this tool here, again, a reflection piece, it's got some of the standard things for a coaching evaluation, but then on the very back page, the thing that I like the most is what are the assistant coach's goals for improving their coaching skill and also for developing the overall program? There are so many details that go into being a head coach that you need assistance that you can count on. You need assistance that can help, that you can delegate things to, to have a well-oiled machine, if you will. There's just so many aspects of it, and I think having this tool for head coaches to just have conversations with their assistants, it's going to help focus what their goals should be, which direction they're headed. That way, we're always looking to improve, and we just don't become stale in what we're doing. Any questions related to assistant coach says evaluation could be more reflection?
Is there a motion to approve these evaluations as presented?
Madam President, I move that we approve this, presented.
Second.
Second.
It was moved by Harold Wingert and seconded first by Shanda Olmstead that we approve these evaluations as presented tonight by Mr. Phillips. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that motion carries 6-0. And you're going to stay right here and talk with us about some more exciting things from the high school about the bowling program.
Yes, I am extremely excited to talk to you today about bowling. I was hired on, I was offered a job here in December, and I started coming around and watching different activities and things like that to try to get to know Ottawa and the kids a little bit. And one of the things that Ms. Whitaker had talked about was, hey, we're getting ready to start a bowling team potentially, and we're going to have a call-out meeting here in a week. That never happened because COVID hit, and so we never had the chance to go through. And so that's something that was definitely wanted to be pursued for this school year. And so on September 30th, I had a call-out meeting for kids that would be interested in bowling. They could either come to a meeting. We had two of those since we were at the split schedule with AM and PM kids. We had two in-person meetings, and then they could also email me for those kids that were remote, that they could show interest. And I didn't have any idea how many people would come, and 82 kids.
Oh, my gosh.
Eighty-two kids said that they were interested in bowling. That, if we had 82 kids, it would be by far the largest program from an athletic standpoint that we would have at high school. And of those 82 kids, it was a strong representation for both boys and girls. We had 45 boys attend, 37 girls attend. So the fact that there is interest when we start pursuing this a little bit, one of the reasons why I think we should consider bowling is because of, well, obviously, a lot of kids want to do it, but it's the time of year that it's offered. Bowling is offered as a winter sport. If you think about how sports are laid out throughout the course of the year, in fall sports, we have football, volleyball, boys soccer, girls golf, girls tennis, cross country, cheer and dance. If you think about spring sports, you've got baseball, softball, track and field, boys golf, boys tennis, girls soccer. If you think about wintertime, we have wrestling, we have boys and girls basketball, and then you have cheer and dance, but those kids are already a part of cheer and dance from the fall, so it's really not a new opportunity for them. So in the wintertime, we really don't have as many options as what we have through some of the other seasons. So by offering bowling, we're going to allow new kids new opportunities that weren't there before. When we think about bowling, we have Fusion Alley that is a fairly new business here, but there are a lot of adults that participate in that and in bowling leagues. And so offering bowling, it's a lifelong sport that kids can be involved in, that they continue with throughout their life. It also, there are lots of different schools that, colleges that have bowling as an option. So offering bowling would also potentially give some of our kids, should they have the skill level, to be able to maybe have access to some resources, some scholarship money, if you will, to be able to attend some colleges. So I think that's good. If we think about this program, it's providing an opportunity in an area where we wouldn't have that, as I mentioned, during the wintertime because it's a little bit lacking. If you're curious how it works, it, there's tryouts are typically done, a school is allowed one week for tryouts, sometime between the Monday after Thanksgiving up until winter break. They can choose what that week is, but you're allowed one, and then practice starts, is eligible for starting January 1st. Now, most people probably aren't practicing on the 1st, but you could. And then the actual competition, it allows kids 10 days that they can bowl to represent Ottawa High School. Based upon the number of kids that we have, a normal or typical, I guess, a typical high school bowling team would be consisting of 15 individuals. So that would be 15 boys, 15 girls, okay, total of 30. Now, we had 84, or 82, sorry, 82, so we wouldn't be able to accommodate all of those. There just wouldn't be competition and talking with Fusion Alley that we'll talk with more. They wouldn't have the facilities to be able to host that many people all at one time. So how would we go about running this? Well, Fusion Alley, as I mentioned, have been unbelievable in how much, how accommodating they have been for what they are considering to offer us to have this bowling program. They're willing to let us use their facilities for free, so we don't have to pay any type of rent or anything like that. They'll allow our students to use their bowling shoes for free during their practice times and competitions. They have agreed to provide different equipment at a reduced cost so that they're not making a huge profit. Instead, the kids are getting things for a much cheaper price, making it affordable for our kids. The only thing that they ask for from us is if, that we just advertise for them a little bit, you know, so we can throw their logo on our live stream that Ottawa Sports Network has been doing. So, you know, things like that, just to promote it, and that is a very, very good deal for us to be able to use their facilities. They have been extremely gracious and helpful in their willingness to be able to help out Ottawa with this endeavor. Obviously, they also would be willing to use that facility for us to host some type of bowling tournament or match or what have you. A cost breakdown, if you look at the last page there, we will need a head coach. A lot of people ask, well, do you need a head coach for the boys? Head coach for the girls also? No, I think we'll be able to have one head coach, because if you think about if it's a total of 30 people, we have lots of programs that have one head coach for 30 individuals. So we would have one head coach to run that if you, based on the negotiated agreement, although we just approved a new one tonight.
The actual cost between a head coach and assistant coach, I think, comes out to $5,040.
Okay.
Seven percent for the head coach, five percent for the assistant coach. So it's a little more than what's seen there.
Yeah. Okay. As far, we will need some type of expense account, so I would recommend that we follow what other programs also do, that it would be similar to, you know, not a lot of equipment involved in bowling, so most of those are like $838. So if we did that for the boys' side and the girls' side, that would be a total of $1,676 for them to be able to purchase different equipment, training tools, things like that. The transportation for that, again, 10 events, most of those would be on the road, because it's typically not like a basketball or football or volleyball where half are at home, half are on the road. We would travel for several of those. So an activity bus, if you hired a driver, they get paid approximately $20 an hour, and the cost to run a bus is about a dollar per mile. Or we could potentially use both mini buses that we have, let the coaches drive those, and then that would save some money there in terms of the cost. Uniformed costs, bowling uniforms are pretty simple. It's usually just a shirt that would have some type of school logo on it, so we could get that probably $40 to $50 per shirt. One thing that we can do, I think we can adjust our uniform rotation a little bit to be able to absorb that cost and put it in a regular uniform rotation. And then obviously, the main piece that you're going to need to compete in bowling is you're going to need a bowling ball. This would probably be viewed similar to like what golf clubs would be for golf or a glove for baseball. There are some equipment that kids would have just to engage in that sport. And again, Fusion Alley could help us with some of those purchases. There are occasionally some fees involved for tournaments, but most of your weekly type of events are, they don't cost anything to go to. If it is a tournament, it's typically only going to be like $50 to $100, and we should be able to pay for that out of just our athletics activity account for that. So if there aren't any further questions, are there any questions anybody has about any of that?
Yes, Shanda.
I have one.
Yeah.
So how far of a radius will they get to cover?
Most of the schools that have bowling are either in the Lawrence, Topeka, Kansas City area. So those are the general areas that we would travel to, to be able to compete in some of those different events.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I did have a couple of questions.
Okay.
What day of the week are tournaments usually on? Like, I have no knowledge in this area.
Your true tournaments will generally be on the weekend, on a Saturday.
So are there just games?
Yep, it would be like volleyball, if you know what a duel is, you are going against another school. So another school would come to Ottawa, we would go to Fusion Alley, we would compete against them. Or it might be two other schools. That would be a weekday type thing. And then a bigger tournament, so to speak, that would be, you know, seven schools or what have you. Those would be Saturday events because they would take much longer.
Okay, okay. And then do we have someone that is knowledgeable already to be the coach? Or is it just someone voluntary?
Well, we have. We haven't tried to hire a bowling coach because the program hasn't been established yet. So I haven't, you know, we, once it's in place, we'll put it out there. I don't know, I know there are a lot of families that bowl, so I don't know if there would be any interest there. I don't know, our bowling.
If not, I hear Mr. Phillips is incredible.
So Jeff, the general manager at the Fusion Bowling Alley, he's also the head coach at Ottawa University, and he has been fantastic. Mr. Graff and I started talking with him last spring when this idea came to us because some students were really interested in having a bowling team. He has told us that he will be more than willing to collaborate alongside of us, help train a coach if they're willing to learn. The bowling alley has some equipment on several lanes that really helps the bowler and the coach kind of dictate where the ball's going and where it should go. And he said that he would train our coach on how to utilize that machine and let us use that for our practices. So I definitely think we can find somebody that's got enough knowledge alongside Jeff to be an appropriate coach for our student athletes.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that information. And then, so if, I mean, I hate to say, like, if there was an unforeseen unfortunate thing where Fusion Alley wasn't an option for them, is there another, I didn't know you even had one, is there another option for them to be able to practice? Or would our bowling team just be?
That would be something that we would have to investigate. I don't know of a lot of bowling in the area. Lawrence does, we could travel to Lawrence, but then that would be a cost that would be put in place because you would have to travel every single day or a couple of days a week, whatever, to go and practice at one of those locations.
Ottawa University utilizes Fusion Alley, and what would happen is Jeff would work with us. Typically, high school bowling teams only practice two days a week. They might have tournaments or games on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then tournaments on Saturdays as well. So when he looked at their schedule, the high school schedule and their league schedule, we would look to be practicing on Monday and Friday if approved and everything works out. The college kids and the leagues take place usually during the week. And then he would work with us. They said they would love to host a couple of events for us, which in talking with other area schools that have bowling teams, that's not something a lot of their bowling alleys are willing to do. So I thought it was pretty cool that they're willing to partner with us and even provide some home opportunities for our students.
Right, right. Excellent. Again, thank you.
We wouldn't be the only community. And certainly, we want to thank Dr. Frank and Bobby Hage and Betty Bursar and everybody else that is associated with Fusion Alley that has worked with us here for being great custodians and trying to provide something for our kids and for our community. Should Fusion Alley not be here and this becomes something that we do, we wouldn't be the first community that has to have our kids travel to participate in something like this. A lot of people do it for swimming, a lot of people do it for bowling. So that would be something that we'd have to talk about and consider amongst the board as to how we wanted to work through that. But Lawrence is not a huge drive away. These are things that we can have a conversation about. Should we ever get there?
Yes, and I'm certainly not meaning any ill will. I was just, because clearly there is an interest. And so I was just wondering if that was like the deciding factor, if it hinged on our program or what. And then I promise this really is the last one. Do you have, I mean, again, I have no bowling knowledge, like, how much does a ball even cost? Like, what are we going to be expecting?
So Jeff, when we had met with him last spring, he said he could put a package together for our students that would be a ball bag, a ball and shoes for somewhere right around $100, and that's with a pretty good discount. That Fusion Alley, because they own that pro shop, they would be willing to provide our students. So I definitely think like getting their own equipment, if they get serious and that's something they want to do, it's feasible for them. A lot of our kids do participate in their leagues right now. So I know some of the students that are interested especially, the boys, are heavily participating in a lot of their leagues in the age range that they qualify for.
Yeah, see, I have no idea. So I appreciate all of this and.
Yeah, we've done a lot of research, and Brad and I started this last spring, done a lot of communicating with schools around us, especially in the Topeka, Lawrence area. Poria High School also has a team. So talked with them, made sure we talked with their activities directors, their head coaches to try to ensure that we had all the knowledge possible about what it would entail to have a bowling program, if that's what we decide to do.
Okay.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'm excited to make a motion that we approve the bowling team.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was moved by Harold Wingert and seconded first.
I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Yes, Susan, I'm sorry.
I've got a question. Are there funds to help if a family can't afford $100?
Yeah, we have a student assist fund at the high school. Yeah, we have a student assist fund at the high school, and things like this are exactly what we utilize that money for, whether that be our college courses, athletic purchases that students need, or anything that they would need in the academic classroom. But we would absolutely make sure that the coach knew that that was an option. So if they knew of a situation of a family or a student in need, that they would know to communicate with Sean so we could help them out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I would also guess, Susan, that the bowling community is not vastly different than any of the other athletic communities that we have out there. Something tells me that within that community, if they knew that there was a student that was struggling to participate in that event, that they would come together to try to help that student. We've relied on that for a number of different things over the course of the years for our kids. And that's something great about our community and about Ottawa in general, is there always seems to be an outpouring of support for our kids when they really need it.
Yep, absolutely. I just didn't want them to shy away from trying out.
Right, right.
If they have a skill.
Thank you, Susan. Did you have any other questions?
No, that was it.
Okay, great. Well, we will go ahead and proceed with the vote then on this. It has been moved and seconded with that we approve the addition of boys and girls bowling teams. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that motion carries 6-0. Thank you so much for all the work you're doing.
Thank you all. I know our kids are going to benefit a bunch from this program. Yeah, definitely.
That's great. Nice, it's wonderful.
I think you can see why Mr. Phillips is so revered at the high school. He's been an incredible addition to OHS, and certainly, these are two huge steps forward for us, and we appreciate all of his work. I did hear Mrs. O'Neill up there say that she was interested in a bowling coaching position. So we may have somebody waiting in the wings.
Who even knew? All right, so we are at section 6.05. We need to approve these policies. This is the second read. We've all seen these before. Is there anything different or anything you need to review for us before?
No, you've seen this in the update. You see the red line policy here. We presented these in August, and to be honest with you, as we started up school and all the things that were happening, I failed to put them on for the second read at the beginning of September. So they're here now for approval.
Could you go ahead and read all those for me? I think I might have left.
I'm going to interrupt you, Mr. Wingert, and ask if anybody would like to take action to approve these policies as presented.
No, I miss having them read to us.
Is there a second?
Julie's dying.
Second. It is moved by Susan Moore. Thank you.